Sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Athens County and the Athens County Public Libraries. And we have the four candidates, for three of whom will be elected in the November election. And we have, so why don't, well, they will soon be giving opening statements, and consequently, there's no sense in my describing them for you. And from the news media, we have David DeWitt of the Athens News and Susan Tebbin of the Athens Messenger. Thank you. And as usual, we'll have opening statements, two minutes per candidate. The order has just been drawn randomly, a bit of gold. And the first question will be answered in the same order, and then after that, there's a random order in which the candidates will answer the questions. So no one ends up right after the same person, time after time after time. It'll be a random order. And after the opening statements, then we'll go to questions. We'll have two from each of the media reps to start with, one and a half minute responses by each candidate, and then we'll go to questions from you members in the audience. And so I see plenty of our, or at least initial supply of our little papers. If you need more papers, just wave a hand and be happy to run it to you. And then we'll go to questions from you members who are here. And the questions will have screened by a little committee, because we want questions that can be answered by all candidates, and we do not want any of those "gotcha" kinds of questions. We will set those aside. And the purpose of this is to try to do our best to create a more informed, knowledgeable electorate, and so that's what we want to do. And we invite questions that will invite the candidates to say, here's how we look at this world of Athens, Ohio. And so we try to do that as fairly as we can. And then at the end, we'll have a one and a two-minute closing statement by each candidate. And again, that order has been drawn randomly, a little early this evening. So with that, why, let me find my material. And the first opening statement will be given by Steve Patterson. Steve?
Thank you. I want to start by thanking the League of Women Voters for putting this on. This is twice in one year for us sitting up here going through the primaries. So again, thank you again. I also want to thank everyone who's here in attendance. I want to thank the press for being here tonight. But again, I want to thank the community who has generously taken their time to come here tonight and listen to our positions on different issues, how we feel about the city. I was sitting there thinking long and hard, and almost went back to the footage from the primary open forum or candidate forum to see what I had actually said, so I didn't kind of step on myself. But I thought, you know, I'm going to keep it short and sweet, as opposed to kind of talk about accomplishments and things of that nature. But I want to kind of lay out some of the things that I am involved in on City Council, which I think reflects the fact that on City Council, it's a part-time job, but you know what? It is by no stretch the imagination a part-time job. It is a full-time job plus. Sometimes, and my wife can attest to this, sometimes lying in bed at night going, hey, honey, wake up, I got to tell you about something. How do we, what are your thoughts on fixing this or taking care of that? The this is and that's. I've served in my first term on City Council. I have served on the Finance and Personnel Committee. Also have been serving on and continue to serve on the City Service Safety Committee. The Chair of JPAC, the Joint Police Advisory Council, which is one of several initiatives that are collaborating between the university and the city, which is one of the things that I am really proud of for our city doing and taking on, working as a community, kind of tearing down the town gown issues and saying collectively, let's all work as one. I served on the Arts and Recreation Advisory Council as one of the elected officials serving on that. And also, the one I'm most proud of is being co-chair of the Commission on Disabilities here in the city of Athens. We've done some great things over the past two years. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Jennifer Cockburn.
Good evening and thank you to the League of Women Voters and the Athens Public Library for hosting us tonight. And I'm happy to join council members Christine Niceley and Steve Patterson, as well as Greg Reno, as we talk about issues that are important to the people of Athens. I'm a native of southeast Ohio and have lived in Athens for over 15 years. I'm a licensed massage therapist and mother of two. Much of my life thus far has been devoted to public service of one sort or another, whether it's serving as a visitor in Philadelphia or a Peace Corps volunteer in Armenia, directing a service for more than 150 AmeriCorps members, or just picking up trash with my family. I'm always looking for ways to become involved, build community, and make a difference. So last winter, I began attending Athens City Council meetings in preparation for my first run for political office. Through my campaign, I met a lot of people who are involved in making Athens work and making it a better place for all of us to live. And I learned a great deal about how local government works. In May, I was one of the top three vote-getters in the Democratic primary and looked forward to a little break before campaigning this fall for the general election. Little did I know that I would be asked to step up and fill the vacant seat left by a law who vows me departure from Athens City Council. So much for a break. So now I'm learning more every day in Athens City Council meetings from my colleagues, including Chris Niceley and Steve Patterson, in conversations with other elected officials and members of the administration, and of course, from the citizens of Athens. I serve on the Athens Shade Tree Commission and the Transportation Committee, where I've been advocate for pedestrians and bicyclists. A young friend, aged three, asked me the other day if I was in school, and I replied, no. But now I realize I am. I'm in City Governance and Civic Engagement School. This same child, when told I was running for Athens City Council, responded, mommies can't do that, can they? And I said, yes, Talia, mommies can do this, daddies can do this, grandmas can do this, your neighbor can do this. We can all become involved in our communities in different ways, and I hope through my work on City Council to give voice to people who might not otherwise be heard.
Okay. Next, we'll turn to Tony Gregorino.
Good to be with you all. I'm Troy Gregorino, and I'm running for City Council at large because, well, for starters, contested races are just more fun, right? But also because I believe I've got the ideas and the enthusiasm and the listening skills, as well as a track record of working with folks in a variety of capacities, both through social services, as well as in the music and arts community, and more recently, actually, in combining the two for some, initiating some month-long fundraises for various nonprofit organizations in the community. Really proud to have done that alongside some great supporters and some artists in the community. This year, the organizations that benefited from that have been My Sister's Place, Friends at the Dog Shelter, Passion Works currently, as well as Rural Action, and I've got one coming down the pike for Athens County Food Bank. And just excited about the response that we've gotten from the community for that, and look forward to doing more of that work. And I'm convinced that if I'm elected to City Council, I'll be able to continue working together with more people to continue to effect positive change at the local level and to do so on a citywide level.
Thank you. Christine.
My thanks to the League and the library for sponsoring this and other election-related forums, because these kind of programs help us all be better informed about the issues we're facing on November 5th. My thanks also to fellow citizens and media reps here tonight, and thanks to those who may not be able to be here, but who take the time and take the time to send an email and to telephone us, to find us at various places around town to comment on issues. Some of our best insights on the state of Athens come from your comments. I think I speak for all the candidates when I say we welcome your thoughts and questions. I believe that questions and inquiry are a critical part of who we are as a community. Respect is equally important, because it hopefully establishes trust and a line of communication between us as elected servants and you as constituents. I believe that elected office can make a difference. Council members work together with other elected officials in the city administration, from the auditor to the law director to the mayor, and work with other elected officials like our state representatives and county commissioners. What I, as a candidate, can bring to the process is experience. Five years on council, I passed Transportation Chair, and I'm currently serving as Chair of the Finance and Personnel Committee on Council. And then over 15 years of involvement in community-based organizations here in Athens. What I can also bring is experience as a partner in university endeavors, having served as a committee member of the first phase of the Sustainability Plan, and now serving as a member of the Audit Ad hoc Committee that works on the Memorandum of Understanding. I welcome this opportunity tonight for questions and discussion from you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Well, let's turn to David DeWitt of the Athens News for the first question. And this first question will be answered in the same order that you and candidates have just spoken, Steve, Jennifer, Troy, and Christine. So right ahead. David?
Thank you, Ellsworth. As I'm sure you're all aware, the city and the county of Athens are in negotiations right now over use of the city's wastewater treatment plant for sewer facilities expanded into the Athens to Alpina Corridor. One of the questions that has been raised regarding that expansion is future development in that corridor and the role that the city should have in making decisions about that future development. I wanted to know what your thoughts are on what the city's role should be on future development in that corridor. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a great question, and it's one that's been discussed quite a bit through council with the mayor. There's a committee that was put together that Chris Niceley served on, as well as Chris Paul, to sit and start talking or going through the discussion with the county commissioners. And one of the things that really kind of has come out of those conversations is, you know, annexation and not having annexation at this point in time. When you look at that whole corridor as it stands right now, in terms of the populace that lives out in that direction, Alt 50, as well as any businesses that are out in the 50 corridor, at this point in time, it really, in terms of the populace, would really set things that kind of off-kilter in terms of are being able to have things like EMS, having fire protection, law enforcement, being able to provide services throughout those areas. But it is something that's being monitored quite closely by City Council to protect the city and the city's resources.
Jennifer?
Of course, I think this is an important thing to continue working on in collaboration with the county commissioners and township trustees, where appropriate, to mitigate any future impact that it may have on the city. And the City Council's planning mission does have some impact on planning and development within a several-mile radius around the city. So certainly, the City Council will be keeping tabs on any future prospective developments. We're not going to say, you know, we're against any future development, but certainly we'll look at the prospects and weigh in on the benefits and drawbacks for our citizens.
Troy?
Well, I agree with Jennifer and Steve that we do need to work in close concert with the county commissioners. However, I'd like to see a great deal more input from citizens who'd be most affected by future development, and not just in the way of kind of giving the nod to that kind of input, but actually incorporating people very seriously in the decision-making process. And I think if the city's resources and/or people whose lives are most affected would be negatively impacted by that, then it's something I'd be opposed to future development. But I'd really want as much input as possible from the people who are most directly affected by that.
Christine?
Thank you. The sewer extension work that we have been engaged with, with the county commissioners, is in the draft stage of looking at the agreement. And that particular Phase 1 is for several thousand entities, and it is that existing unit that will be adapted, brought into the sewer extension. Phase 2, that might incorporate future development, would be examined out in the future once again with input from the city and the county to look at future agreements on that. But I would agree that we really need to be very careful about protecting our resources. Part of that agreement that we have right now is that the city will be monitoring the sewer intake, and that will be done at the four points that we're hooking up the sewer extension system, and that will be done on a periodic basis, and then future development reviewed after that for Phase 2 extension.
Thank you. Now, we'll turn to Sue Tebbin of the Messenger. And let me just note for the candidates that the order now is slightly different. You've got it in front of you, and so first responder will be Troy, and then followed by Jennifer, Steve, and Christine. And so with that, Sue, floor is yours.
Thank you. It's been one of the most hot-button issues of this campaign season, and I know it's not necessarily on the ballot, but I wanted to see what all of your feelings are on fracking issue, as we're speaking about environment and all of that. How do you feel about moving on with that within the city limits?
Well, I would say you can't vote against fracking on the ballot, but you can vote for me. It's something, I really think that, to be blunt about it, I actually think that there's been too much catering to some of the views that want to protect land ownership rights ahead of the integrity of the actual ecosystem and supports life for all of us. And I think that we should think seriously about working on a statewide initiative, as Vermont has done, as a couple of countries have been successful in doing. I know there have been some citywide bans in Ohio that have been successful, but to have invested so much energy on the part of so many people and to see that fall short, I really think that we need to have a more proactive approach against fracking in our community. And I'm of the view that having legal ownership of land no more gives someone the right to poison into the planet any more than owning cigarettes gives one the right to light up in a hospital. I really think it's a misguided view, and that we should work very seriously to kind of set a precedent in Ohio and stand up for the area and the lack of support around it.
Thank you. Jennifer?
I am staunchly against fracking anywhere, especially anywhere near where I live and where my food is grown. I'm terrified about potential damage to our water supply, air quality, and the landscape that hydraulic fracturing and its associated activity present. I'm currently on the Advisory Council for the Philloph Rights Committee, which has been working on putting fourth language on the ballot with some recent frustrations to allow voters in Athens to say, we do not want fracking in and around our community. We have the basic rights of self-governance and the right to clean air and water that have been granted to us under the Constitution. And as Troy said, you know, land rights, we're giving up too much to the folks who are avid about protecting land rights. We often sacrifice rights for the good of the community. You know, we're not allowed to discharge raw sewage into the water stream from our homes. That's why we have public sanitation. We're not allowed to grow marijuana on our personal properties, because there are laws against that. So we need our lawmakers to work on protecting us, not protecting corporations, and not protecting oil barons and oil companies.
Thank you. Steve?
It's a great question. Yes, it is a hot button. It's something that I know City Council has been working very hard on protecting what is within our city boundaries. Those are the things we do directly have control over in terms of, you know, fracking. I think more importantly is the issue of injection wells. That's my big fear, is injection wells. One of the things I would like to see move forward, and I think that there may have been some forward momentum on having a Hocking River Valley Coalition, to have legislators all up and down our watershed, which is the Hocking Valley Aquifer, who are working in unison with each other, as opposed to having a large sweeping legislative act to try to regulate landowners' property. But if we can get, you know, the city of Athens, Nelsonville, Logan, Lancaster, everybody up and down the Hocking River Valley, you know, which, again, the aquifer runs underneath, and you have to run on the same page, I think that we have a lot more strength and power in doing something along those lines to protect our precious water supply. I agree 100% with Jennifer in terms of it's our right to clean air and water, something I'm very concerned about, concerned for my family, for my 21-month-old twins and the water supply that they have, and leaving behind clean, fresh water for them in the future. I'm concerned about the citizens of Athens, but I'm concerned about all the citizens up and down the Hocking River Valley. I'm concerned about people living in Coolville. You know, it's an issue.
Christine?
Thank you. The City Council has spoken fairly clearly on our position about fracking. In 2011, we passed a resolution to execute and enforce ordinances within our jurisdiction to protect our air and water quality. And I think that's one of the key things, that water, you know, our water supply is probably our most important thing for healthy, healthy living. In 2012, we addressed the Wayne National Forest, asking them to do an environmental impact study with some of the potential fracking that could take place or the lease for the fracking. And then we also did legislation to update our wellhead management protection. So we have taken a number of steps and positions on fracking and really to protect for the safety of the citizens. I agree, I think the injection wells are probably one of our greatest dangers at this point, so we need to do what we can. One of the other things that's been raised is council was supportive of the mayor on the city administration offering a response. It's a friend's filing of another municipality in the state in northern Ohio that are working on the fracking issue. And the other thing, I think, I have 15 seconds left, but I'll try and get it in, is a question that is raised in my own mind of whether the Ohio Department of Natural Resources versus the EPA as being the appropriate organization to govern fracking.
Okay. Thanks, all of you. So now we'll go to question three, and David DeWitt, please.
Thank you, Ellsworth. This past spring, questions arose about the location of the farmer's market and the long-term lease at its current location at the Market on State. Just recently, when the Athens Planning Commission approved Title 41, plan review plans for Texas Roadhouse that partially shares, would share a parking lot where the current farmer's market is located, questions arose again as the owner of the Market on State said that they don't have a long-term lease. Athens City Code 110419 states that the city of Athens shall set aside a portion of the recreation center for the Athens Farmer's Market. And various city officials have expressed the opinion that the nature of that space now is no longer suitable for a large farmer's market to grow. So I'm sorry for all the pretext, but my question is, what is your opinion of that obligation, that codified obligation of the city to provide a space for the Athens Farmer's Market, especially considering its current tenuous situation? Thank you.
I guess that would be me. That's a great question. It's a great question, because it has really prompted me to sit and think long and hard and have many conversations with our city planner, Paul Loeb. I've also spoken with our city engineer, Andy Stone, about some of the ins and outs. I've even spoken with the mayor at length about that particular code, which does provide for space at the community center. But in having conversations with the Athens Farmer's Market Board, the board also states that they don't feel that that particular space would be appropriate. Over the summer, some of you may have read, it prompted a study that took place, it was kind of a survey that was put on by the Boynton Beach School. The results will be coming out soon, to where they were trying to get their head wrapped around, what is the vehicle traffic that comes in and out of the farmer's market? You'd be astounded how many, how much vehicle traffic there is, how much foot traffic there is. Space-wise, the farmer's market would be looking at about five acres. That far exceeds what exists right now, that would be usable space down at the community center. What I believe is that to sit down with the farmer's market board and try to explore some potential options, it may not be in the form of land itself, but there's some things I believe that we could do from an economic development standpoint that might help the farmer's market. But again, that would require legislation, so there's a lot yet to go through, and there's a lot that will be heard, I think, in the near future about farmer's market.
Thank you. Christine?
Yes, thank you. It's, it is a quandary. But I would, I would think that the city, because of that code, is really obligated to try and come up with some kind of solution, whether, and I hear the practicality of what Council Member Patterson was talking about, of, you know, even the farmer's market people, some of them saying the community center location exactly is not exactly appropriate for them. I think we've got, if I want to say, I believe the figure is close to 15,000 vehicles per day traveling on East State Street, and then heavy traffic coming in and out of the community center. On the one hand, it might draw a lot of customers, but on the other hand, very, very consolidated space there at the community center for proper parking. I would think it would be very helpful to get interested parties together to brainstorm and to definitely have the City Council members and city administration do what they can to encourage some kind of creative solution for the farmer's market. I think it would be great if we could figure out something at the community center, but we don't want to force it on the farmer's market either.
Don't drive, and so I think the current location probably has some significant disadvantages in the first place. And so I was pleased to see in recent months more activity in the small version of the Athens Farmer's Market. I'm not taking credit for that, I think it's a good idea. And I wrote it down years ago, because I think that we should be more creative and exploring ideas for how to intersect more with people who aren't typically consumers for the farmer's market. And I don't know, I think, for one thing, we need to involve some, involve vendors themselves too for more input. I think there could be some unexplored, kind of untapped ideas for that. I don't know, something like the underutilized fairgrounds, if that's too far the other direction, or something this direction, but I certainly think it's something that we need to explore and really involve more decision-makers, and it doesn't sound like a problem that's beyond us to solve, and particularly, you know, since it's in the code, it's our obligation to make sure that it's a maximized service for everybody.
Thank you. Jennifer?
David, I applaud your reading of code, and I do want to note that at a recent board meeting of the Athens Farmer's Market, that particular sentence of code was quoted. The vendors are aware of that and aware of the support that the city is giving to other groups also mentioned in that particular area of code. You know, the city will be working on a swimming pool at some point soon, and supporting the arts. And so the Athens Farmer's Market feels like, okay, we don't want to be the stepchild here. Can you step up and help us too? They're in a very tenuous situation at the current location with the month lease. They are one of the most important resources in our community, providing food to so many people and bringing in over a million dollars in revenue. I don't remember all the figures, but lots of employment with the Athens Farmer's Market. So certainly, we need to step up and see how we can help the Athens Farmer's Market find a permanent and suitable location, wherever that may be. There are a lot of different possibilities being talked about right now, and certainly there's a lot of input coming forth from the vendors, and the Athens Farmer's Market Board will be bringing forth some of those options and looking for support from us as a, as a city.
Thank you. Well, now we'll turn to Susan Tebbin for the next question. Susan?
I feel like I should have more preface now to my questions. Obviously, within, as Mr. Gregorino just said, we have a close relationship with the university. I just wanted to see what you guys think of, how do you think the relationship is going with the university? How do you think it could increase? Or if you think that we are not doing very well, how do you think we could improve with our relation with the university? I know there's a Disabilities Commission that is at with the city and the university. Is there more commissions that we're working on? Is there other ways that we can combine the city and the university governance and just life in general?
Christine?
I think there's always room for improvement, and it's a challenge to both sides. So I'm not meaning it as a criticism to the university or to the city, but just saying we could, we can always stand to improve. Certainly, the Memorandum of Under- Certainly, the memorandum of understanding, work that's happened in the past probably year and a half since the university came about, I think most immediately is a direct result of the university offering to help with the purchase of our ladder truck, which is so often used on the university campus. And from that have, that memorandum of understanding has grown to incorporate several agreements, including ones that Councilmember Patterson has mentioned, the J-PAC agreement, the Joint Police Advisory, and now looking at the possibility of a joint disabilities commission. But I see that there are issues in the community, and it's something that's been on my mind as I look at the activity reports from the city that we have so far, I believe it was as of August 29th, we have, I have 30 seconds left, okay. We have had over 400 alcohol-related arrests. We have had over 300 noise complaints. We have had, I believe, 30 nuisance parties that have been declared, and with problem alcohol consumption on campus, I think we have a real challenge for both leadership from both the city and the university administration to begin to address this issue. And so I'm hopeful that we can work more on that.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Well, we're all bobcats in one way or another. Many of us came to Athens through Ohio University, whether it was to study there, to teach there, or to be employed there in some way or another. So we all have our connections, and every day, I'm reminded of our connections because my children now go to East Elementary School where they both have student teachers, or students who are involved in some other capacity in their classrooms. So that's one example of the great positive impact that Ohio University students can have in our community. And I think we need to remind ourselves of that, because it's easy to get distracted by the litter and by the noise and by the nuisances, or by hearing football games in my bedroom at 11 o'clock at night. But we're working on that, and that concern was related to President McDavid, and I understand there, there might be some changes coming. So I think, you know, it's like any relationship, we need to have ongoing communication, and we need to have negotiation, we need to ask to have our needs met, we need to express what those needs are. And so, the mayor meets regularly with President McDavid, city council meets on a regular basis with President McDavid, as well as a few members of his administration. So certainly, are there problems? Yes. Are there wonderful examples of positive effects going both ways? Yes. Do we need to continue to work and communicate? Absolutely.
Thank you. Steve?
Through my lens, I've, I've moved here in 1998 as an assistant professor, or 19, yeah, 1998. Thank you. I got the phone looked like, no, no, no. 1998 is when I moved to Athens as a, as an associate, or assistant professor at OU. So I've been affiliated with OU my entire time here in Athens, and one of the things that I have noticed, especially in more recent years, is that the relationships have gotten stronger and improved through my lens immensely between Ohio University and the City of Athens, city government. I think the MOUs are a large part of that, or the memorandums of understanding, in particular, the ones that I'm most familiar with is the one that I, I chair, which is the Joint Police Advisory Council. I, I agree that, that there are some issues still with, with safety in the city, with the increasing citations. However, I also want to point out that some of those are more than likely due to something that came through J-PAC, the Joint Police Advisory Council, which is to point out to both of our police chiefs, the police chief Tom Pyle for the city and Tom, or Andrew Powers for Ohio University, that they have the tools in the toolbox to curb a lot of the things that are, have been very problematic, which are a lot of the thefts going on, to where they know that they have the tools necessary to close down an unruly party if it's getting out of control, and houses are burning, and can shut them down in a fairly expedient fashion, if needed.
Thank you. Troy?
Well, this is a question that comes up in some form every election, so I certainly mean no disrespect to the question, it's an important question, but it's something that seems to be talked about in every city that even resembles Athens, where you have a small, particularly where you have a small city and a medium to large-sized university that's a really pervasive influence on that city. And I really think that Athens handles that dynamic as well as any city that I've seen. I mean, I know there's, some people seem to be kind of disgruntled at any time, there's one thing impeding it all on the other, but some of us really embrace the kind of vitality and the energy that comes with it. Yeah, there's clashing, but there's also meshing, and I think, in reality, Athens, Ohio wouldn't be Athens, Ohio without Ohio University, and Ohio University wouldn't be, Ohio University without Athens. I mean, we'd be some other place. And I, I really, and someone who embraces how well we've done with integrating the two, I think it's a really fascinating dynamic, and it makes us unique, there's always more we can do, and of course, safety is always a concern wherever you live, but I think it's a really, it's a really commendable and sort of a, sort of something that transpires organically. Now, this is, it's the kind of relationship that happens when these two kind of entities exist in such close proximity, and I think it's what sets us apart, makes us unique.
Thank you, Troy. Now we'll shift to questions from audience members, and while they're shuffled this way. This is only one of four programs this, this month, sponsored by the League and the Library. And a week from tonight, the topic of electric aggregation. Let me just read this, this is sponsored by the League. Electric Aggregation, issue two throughout the county, issue three in the city. On November 5th, voters will decide whether to allow Athens City and Athens County governments to aggregate electric service for retail customers. What is electric aggregation? What are the pros and cons? So the League is sponsoring a town hall meeting next Tuesday, 6:30 PM, at the community center instead of right here, and I certainly, well, to the very best of my knowledge, our mayor, Paul Wile, and county commissioner, Chris Chanil, will be there, and if they can't come, I'm not aware of it yet, so I'll look forward to that. And so, basically, we're going to ask each of them to explain and talk about the issue, mayor for the one in the city, and county commissioner for the one for the rest of the county, and then we'll have, we'll have an opportunity for everybody there to ask questions or make comments. And so, since I was involved in setting it up, there's a three-minute time limit for ordinary citizens. And so, you're welcome to come if you have something to say, you've got three minutes to say it, and if you have a question you'd like to ask, well, you've got three minutes to focus your question. And so that will be next Tuesday, 6:30, at the community center rather than here. Then jumping ahead three weeks, the League is, the League and the Library will be sponsoring a candidate's night for the board of election for Athens City Schools. So that will be right in this room, three weeks tonight on the 29th, so I'll be delighted if all of you can come to those. So with that, timeout for a slight commercial. Okay, good. Feel free to write. I only have two pieces of paper, and I guess I'll sort of chuckle and say, why don't you write away an equation, because I really like to read these at least once before I open my mouth, and I haven't had a chance to. Okay, this one, straightforward enough. And so now, Ken makes you all aware of the order, and Troy, you're first and so on, if anybody's confused, wave a hand when you do in class. Okay, what is the most important thing you wish to accomplish in your term of office? Troy, you start it off.
Good question. Well, I alluded to earlier, I earlier alluded to some of the work that I've been excited about this year, kind of in unorthodox ways, mostly through my position as a booking manager for Dunkin' Coffee, and also being really close with a lot of performing artists and visual artists, initiating these fundraising events that have been unique in a lot of ways, and they're, they're month-long, and they raise awareness and funds at the same time for nonprofit organizations that I consider to be really important for a lot of people. And I think innovating more ways right from the get-go to work, not only collaborate with a variety of different people in a variety of different levels, but also to find ways to, on a more citywide level, with more of a platform for connecting with more people, find ways to, to do more to help people whose work helps others. There are a lot of people in our community who could use more of that kind of assistance, and it's something that's extremely important to me, as is the preservation of the natural environment, which I've talked about here extensively too. But I think, I think those are, those are two of the things that in concert I would want to work on immediately, as well as other plans as things went on that would kind of involve those aspects.
Thank you, Troy. Jennifer?
Wellness and sustainability are two of the most important issues to me, and I've already become a thorn in the side of several folks in the city administration in advocating for wellness for our employees and for our citizenry, and I'll continue to do that, whether it means by increasing opportunities for outdoor or indoor recreation, the choices that we have around us for recreation, including walkways and bike ways, so that people who are getting around our city in other means besides traveling in cars can do that safely and effectively. And that's something that I will continue to do on the committee for this transportation committee. Anytime we have a project coming up, I want to be advocating for folks who are out there walking, biking, in, in wheelchairs, or however they may be getting around the city, because it's, it's important for us to make our city accessible to all of our people, whether we're on four wheels, two wheels, no wheels at all. So those are some of the issues that are important to me, and of course, I look forward to hearing from folks about the issues that are important to them.
Thank you, Jennifer. Christine?
Yes, I have several very practical goals, and then also probably some wish list items. The one that's kind of a wish list is a better, stronger sense of community, and I know that can be very nebulous, but I think there are a number of ways that we can work on that. One of them, and this could be possibly, I, I know some conversations have already occurred, there's already interest amongst planners, city, university, but affordable housing for many different people in our community. And I think making this a livable place for as many residents as possible, no matter what the level of income from the very lowest, but also in some of the higher levels, is very important. I think the other thing, and this is something that's kind of geared my heart to some past work on the transportation committee, and also I think helps create a sense of community, are the, is transportation and transit, continuing to work to make that stronger. We're blessed with an Athens transit manager and a very supportive administration for expanding our transit program. I think we can do better with that. My other one is the very practical one, and I'm very proud of it. My husband says whenever we go to cities, I look at wastewater treatment plants. I'm thrilled with them, and I am so proud of this city working through to, to get that completed, and to also make sure the financial resources are there to pay for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, Steve, you're next.
You know, I have to agree with Chris when it comes to the wastewater treatment plant. I don't go checking out all the other cities' wastewater treatment plants, but I'm very confident of them, because I too am very proud of this accomplishment. We're talking a $20 million plus project, and we've worked really hard on that. For me, a couple things that come to mind in terms of what's important to me, disabilities and disability services, accessibility and accommodations of the City of Athens are immensely important to me. As Chris mentioned earlier, I authored an MOU, a memorandum of understanding, to have a joint disabilities commission, teaming up the Commission on Disabilities with Ohio University, what's called PACDAP, the President's Advisory Council on Disabilities Accessibility Programs and Accessibility Programs. I believe that it's great that there's these two separate entities, but you know, what's falling in the cracks is everything in between. We have over 60% of the, the individual students at OU who endorse, using accessibility services on campus, 60% of those, which is about 750 students, live off-campus. And so, to have an MOU such as like, such as that, we get a lot more cross-talks going on to talk about this, issues in the city. Another thing that I'm fondly engaged in and proudly engaged in is a survey that has taken place with the Boynton Beach School to look at our farmer's market. Our farmer's market is one of the gems of the city of Athens. To lose the farmer's market, for whatever reason, would be an absolute travesty in my mind. We're talking about $1.4 million last year alone being generated, over 230 full-time jobs, 260 part-time jobs. It's a, it's an economic engine unto itself, and it's, you know, let's be real, it's also probably one of the hot political spots to go and schmooze with everybody, because we all go there. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Well, let's turn to the next question, and let me note that if you'd like to have me repeat the question sometime, feel more than free to ask, because I should have volunteered that one question at home, I'm volunteering it right now, so you don't have to capture it immediately. Okay. Entering the City of Athens via Stimson Avenue, there's a sign that says, "Welcome, Building an Inclusive Community." So here's the question. If re-elected or elected for the first time, what would you do to build, quote, or to quote, "build an inclusive community," in quote? So, let's see, it is, Jennifer, I'm lead here first on this one, so all of you've got neck screens, so I don't need to worry, go right ahead.
Thank you. I think inclusion is very important. Whenever I've worked with nonprofit organizations, whether it's been in Philadelphia or across the water in, in the former Soviet Union, I've focused on making everyone feel welcome and making everyone feel like they have a voice. So I think the first, the most important aspect of inclusion is to make sure that folks are listened to. And one way that we can do that is having public forums like this, like public forums that were held at the community center last year, where folks had the opportunity to stand up and speak their piece about whatever their issue may be, whether it's about bicycling in the City of Athens, whether it's about jet trails or something else. No matter what it may be, folks have the opportunity to be heard here. Their voices can be, be heard, and we give value to what people have to say. We need to make sure that we are including different voices whenever we make decisions about major projects, whether it's from infrastructure to the future of the Athens Farmer's Market and where, where our farmer's market will be located. So I think that's something that's always on, on the radar of our elected officials and our administration, and we need to continue to be cognizant of making sure we're including as many voices as possible in conversations.
Thank you. Christine?
Thank you. I think ways to encourage inclusivity, I touched on in my opening statement by saying, you know, I think that communication with lots of different people is important, being accessible, so that we hear different people's voices. One of the other things that I mentioned just a few moments ago is affordable housing, that's a way when we have different kinds of housing for all different economic income levels, that that's a way of being inclusive. On a very practical level too, I think we, the city has led by example in being inclusive in another way, and that we have adopted a domestic partner registry for the city within the past year. So these are, these are all just different elements and ways that we can make all the members in our community feel like they belong and are a part of it.
Thank you. Steve?
I, it can't stop my head, I agree with Chris completely when it comes to the domestic partner registering that's out there, because what that does, it affords individuals who are domestic partners to take advantage of things like a family plan at the community center, or to take advantage of other things that could lead to cost savings. It just makes perfect sense. The MOUs, to go back to these memorandums of understanding, and in particular, the one that I am currently trying to shepherd through, the MOU committee allows for, in terms of disability engagement, it allows for a majority of the council members being individuals with disabilities, have the voice, be at the table, speak to what your needs are. I agree with, with what Chris was saying about affordable housing, but I also agree that it should be accessible housing. We should have housing that takes on what we refer to as universal design elements. It's cradle to grave, we're talking about a four-year-old child being able to pull a 10-pound door, or pull on a door open, or, you know, my 80-year-old mother being able to pull an 80, 80-pound, or 40-pound, a 10-pound door open. You know, when we're talking about universal design, we're You know, when we're talking about universal design, we're talking about things where it's easy for someone who's young or someone who's older to be able to gain access to any entranceway, any bathroom facility, and not just the door, its wits, its ramps. It's something that I'm very keen on, making sure that that's something that we're able to incorporate to keep our community very inclusive.
Thank you Steve. Troy?
Well, accessibility and communication, I mean, I think those are two of the most important aspects. And I also think we need to be much more cognizant and much more vocal in issues of class. To me, inclusivity means inclusivity of everyone, it means including our poorest four. It means access to resources and the decision-making process needs to be more inclusive of people who currently are outside of those processes. And I'm someone who's bent on being some part of Athens, making national headlines for something other than our poverty rates and our number of arrests on Halloween weekend. I really think that we've got the resources and the will in this community and the right people in this community to really come up with some imaginative solutions as to how to be more inclusive of people who are far too often on the outside fringes of both the decision-making process and access to the resources within the city.
Thank you. Let's turn to our third question, and feel free to dream and write some questions, because I have a fairly short stack. I just have one piece of paper here. Okay, and let's see, you probably all have the order. Christine, you go first on this one, you're in, everybody else will follow. Okay. How about the fairgrounds for the farmers market?
Certainly, it would be a possibility. I think it's up to a discussion of a lot of different people, the fair board, and the commissioners, and then also the city in ways that we might be able to make it happen. In terms of it being a central location that people could get to more easily by going on our roundabout or out on Route 682, that certainly has some merit. Possibly easier parking, and would draw attention to, you know, another use of the fairgrounds throughout the year. I know that the pumpkin festival that was held locally last weekend at the fairgrounds was, I think some of the organizers were just relieved that disappointed that more people didn't come out. And so if it raises the visibility of a piece of land in the central part of the city for more usage and more of the time, that would be great. Good idea, whoever raised the question.
Thank you. Troy?
Well, I believe I mentioned the fairgrounds as a possible location a long ago, not knowing if it's the best solution or not, but like I said, it's certainly one that stands out to me as a, you know, viable option, and I'd like, you know, input from more of the vendors themselves on that. All I know about the fairgrounds for sure is I feel like it's a vastly underutilized space in the city, and my first introduction to how attendance can be at the fairgrounds was when the Derby was happening, and I was new to the whole phenomenon, had no idea it was even happening, and it looked to me like all of humanity was coming out of the fairgrounds. So people can find their way to the fairgrounds, and I bet they would go there for fruits and vegetables and lots of other awesome things. So, I don't know, I think we should give serious consideration to it, again with input from more people in the decision-making, and I don't know, it'd be worth trying, I think.
Thank you. Let's see, Steve, you're next.
I too think it's an interesting option. Again, I've had many, many conversations with farmers market, farmers market board, and I can say that the fairgrounds has come up in their conversation. However, coming from the Athens Farmers Market Board, that's not some place that they would be particularly keen on going, moving towards. There's some other options that they are looking at, some options possibly further out East State Street, but again, looking to, they will be looking to the city council for some help or guidance on being able to find themselves a new home. And you too, if you think about it, you know, farmers market right now is in a real precarious situation with the new restaurant coming to town and where they will land. But I think, I guess the point being is that farmers market needs to be a voice in where they ultimately end up as well, as opposed to kind of intimated, here's where you're going. They're a voice to go, you know, make this as easily decide, well, we're going to go loop Chester Hill and be part of the Chester Hill market, which is fine, it's their prerogative. But again, it's a group that I'm very, very protective over, and making sure we don't lose that, yeah.
Thank you Jennifer.
I think essentially, we're the wrong group of people to be asking that question, because the Athens Farmers Market Board at this point is the group that needs to be making those decisions. They need to be saying what their needs are and where they want to be. And right now, I know they're in the process of having those discussions, and I look forward to seeing some of the examples that they come up with of farmers market settings in other cities. That was a suggestion that I made recently to the Farmers Market Board, that they present us with some illustrations of, well, how do they do it in Ann Arbor? How do they do it in this city or that city? Because, you know, we have one model that's been working for a while, but it's not working anymore, and so we need to have a new model. And whatever that model's going to be, we all need to get behind it as a city government and as a city and as a community that supports our farmers and needs to eat good food.
Thank you. Okay, here is the next question, and this one's a bit long, so if you don't have it repeated, why don't I read it twice? And if you want to repeat it again, you're fine. That doesn't mean it's not an assumed question, but... Is it really possible to protect our region from being damaged by fracking with action at a local level? If so, how? And why aren't we? And if not, then why is not working for legislative change at a state level our number one priority? Why don't I just read it again? And then if you want it, or you want to hear it again? It's your choice. So, is it really possible to protect our region from being damaged by fracking with action at a local level? If so, how? And why aren't we? And if it's not, then why is not working for legislative change at a state level our number one priority? Let's see, and you've got here, Steve, you're first on this one, and right across the line.
It's a, I mean, it's a very important question to be asking. You know, I'm the son of a hydraulic engineer. He was, my father was a hydrologist. Given that, you know, you end up looking at lots of stones when you're a kid, when you're a child, and trying to understand how fluid moves through them. You know, to protect our own boundaries and the property within the city limits is well within our rights and is smart and prudent. However, aquifers move. It's a flowing body of water under the ground, it might be flowing slow, but it flows. My concern has always been that, that if there's fracking, or, again, I can't stress this enough, because it's less regulated, is injection wells that are upriver from us with our aquifer. We can do everything you can possibly imagine, try and protect within our own state limits. It's not going to do us any good if we don't have protections further up our water supply. So my concern has always been that, again, I mentioned it earlier, the possibility of having some coalition of city governments up and down the Hocking River Valley to get everybody on board and try to legislate as best you can throughout the entire region to protect our water supply, because we're downstream from a lot of open real estate that could be possibly fracked. But again, I'm more concerned about taking old existing wells, and with minimal testing, deciding that we're going to turn this into an injection well, where we're getting twice as much waste as what's going in with the fracking itself.
Thank you. And let's see, number two is Jennifer, you're next.
I think we should all absolutely be advocating for legislative change on the state level, but that does not mean that we should not be working for change on a local level as well. I have been writing letters and emails to my elected officials on the state level, asking them to enact a statewide moratorium on injection wells, and I encourage you all to do that as well. We need to be acting on as many fronts and as many levels as we possibly can, because this is an imminent threat to our national resources, to our health, and to our future. So, yes, we need to be working on a state level, we need to be talking with our elected officials, asking them to step up, because the ODNR has failed to protect us, the EPA has failed to protect us, the governor has failed to protect us. All of our state legislators have failed to protect us. They are protecting the oil barons. They're protecting corporations right now, and we need them to act for the people.
Thank you. And let's see, next, we have Troy.
Well, yeah, I think it's painfully tedious and painfully fallible to rely strictly on local action for something as pervasive and potentially widespread of the effects of fracking. I mean, even if we went with the approach of going down river with the hopes that one at a time would fall in line and agree with us, and, you know, there's the very real possibility that this one does, that one doesn't, this one does, I mean, when it's all downstream, I don't think we can really afford the length of time it would take to rely strictly on more localized efforts. And I think a statewide ban would at least assure us something that we could devote our resources to, where we feel like there's a real payoff from the efforts. And I think to do anything less than that ends up in what feels to me more like symbolism than accomplishment. And on something as serious as the potential effects of fracking, I'm not interested in symbolism, I'm interested in getting something done that we can be proud of having worked on together and that will secure a better future down the line.
Thank you. Christine?
Thank you. I'd say it's an excellent question, and my comment back would be, I think we need to work on both levels, because our very responsibility as city council persons is to protect and provide for the welfare of the citizens of the city. We're bound by that, to enact legislation that we think will be effective. And that's what we've done by saying we will enforce our local ordinances, that we will protect our wellhead protection management area. Certainly, there is wisdom in working in coordinated efforts of other people to approach for change at the state level, because we are a statutory city, we are bound by Ohio revised code, and we do need to abide by that. So I'd say we both, we need to effect change at both levels. I'd even argue for the national level, for asking, requesting legislation to go through, for the EPA doing further research on what the risks and threats, and maybe even opportunities that fracking holds.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. I'm afraid I was a half a syllable too quick on that, sorry. Well, let's turn to closing statements. These will be two minutes, and the order here was obtained by a separate random order drawing, and I'll read off the order, I care if we recorded, while you reach in your memories for that two-minute closing statement. So this will be Christine, Steve, Jennifer, and Troy, in that order. Okay, Christine, you're on for the closing statement, two minutes apiece.
Thank you. Thanks again to the League and the Library for sponsoring tonight's forum, and to the media and audience for posing the questions, and to my colleagues for their discussion about the issues that are important to Athens. I'm grateful to have been elected to council, and also to have the honor of serving with some very, just awe-inspiring people at the city administration level and other also elected council members. That's just been a real honor. If re-elected, I will approach serving another two years with passion for our community. I'll be there to answer questions and make decisions which I believe will be in the best interest of the City of Athens. I'll be there to pay attention to the financial obligations of the city through appropriate legislation. I'll be there to provide leadership as the city grows. We're fortunate to have many leaders in our community, as was so evident when witnessing the participants who engaged in the Conversations Forum that was sponsored late this summer by the Athens Foundation. That event highlighted for me personally that we have a community filled with leaders that together can address the critical issues and can work together towards a stronger Athens. I'd welcome the opportunity to serve again as a member of city council. Thank you.
Thank you Christine. Steve?
I do want to thank the League of Women Voters, Athens Library, I want to thank the media for coming here, and I want to thank all of you for attending tonight, again, taking the time of your evening to listen to the candidates. And I want to thank the candidates as well for allowing me to be a lively discussion about the issues in Athens. I have been proudly serving this city for two years, you know, with this being my first term, and feel that in that time, I really kind of hit the ground running. Within my first year, I was able to revamp one of the Athens city codes which had to do with vending in the city, and start cleaning some things up in that particular piece of legislation. I've been involved in, again, the Commission on Disabilities, on JPAC, the Joint Police Advisory Council, I've been serving on the Finance and Personnel Committee on City Service, working on earth parks and recreation. And given that, you know, a lot of balls in the air, but you know, the other thing is, is that I love what I do, and I love the involvement, I love hearing from the citizens of Athens, saying they're saying, "This is not working, can you look into this?" There's flooding on South Richland Avenues, there's something that can be done. As a city council member, you find yourself at any point during the day having to field questions, and the citizens are expecting a fairly expedient answer to you. And one of the things I pride myself on is being able to act quickly and try to get answers for the citizens of Athens, and provide them some comfort in understanding that someone is doing something. It's, again, something I pride myself on, and I look to you to re-elect me on the city council again for another two-year term. Thank you.
Thank you Steve. Jennifer?
Thank you again to council members Addison and Nynse, and Detroit and Reno for taking time to participate in the forum, and thank you to the League and the county library system for continuing to make sure that we have an informed citizenry. My background, education, and experience make me an ideal city council member. I have a long history of civic engagement and public service. In my short time as a city council member, I've made a point of meeting with other council members and members of the city administration to gather information and familiarize myself with city issues and projects. I encourage my neighbors and fellow citizens to contact me by phone, email, or Facebook to discuss the issues that matter to them. I look forward to continuing to serve the people of Athens, and ask for your vote November. Let's work on making this community even more dynamic and vibrant, and thank you all for coming tonight and engaging in an ongoing dialogue about how to build this community.
Thank you Jennifer. Troy?
Well, this election presents us with a rather straightforward choice between maintaining status quo, keeping in place all of the incumbents, who frankly, strictly, not only as people who already know their way to their offices, but are sincerely well-meaning and hard-working, very capable people, and I appreciate it being here. But it's a choice between maintaining all of the incumbents or maintaining all of them except for one, by choosing instead to elect a new voice, a fresh perspective, an independent perspective that's not beholden to any particular party stance on an issue when there are difficult decisions to be made and critical dialogue to be had. And I can only assure you that if you choose to elect me, you're electing, I think clearly, the most progressive candidate on the ballot, and someone who believes that Athens, Ohio is already the greatest small city in the country, and that we can, should, and will do more to become even greater. And I'm someone who believes that. We do that by doing even more to promote and foster the already thriving arts and music community here, by doing even more to extend services and assist those in our community who need it the most, and by doing even more to protect the integrity of the natural environment that defines the very essence of this place. So I thank you all again, and thanks for the consideration, and I thank you for the time.
Thank you Troy. Well, I'd like to give a couple of thanks. Everybody by now knows the names of the two organizations who sponsored this. Todd just came back in the door, he's the key person at the library here. Todd, thank you very, very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks all of you for that. Dana Carlson, wait one of the time cards, so people know who kept time for us. Thank you. And Cliff Cora, the American held, reviewing the questions. And I think reader Lee Gregg stepped out a little bit ago, she's probably out filming a book at this particular time. I guess I did probably with my name, Elswood Holden. I'm not running for office these days, so it doesn't matter whether I push my name at you or not. And David DeWitt of the Athens News, and Susan Tepin of The Messenger, thank you very, very much. And you always have to hear me with some kind of little observation. Whenever we have something like this, I find it so magnificent that I just wish we could take basically this meeting and run it throughout the world, let people see how government and elections can be done, in terms of thoughtfulness, good ideas, harmony, good-heartedness, and actually, this time, instead of leaving from Columbus, let's go to Washington DC, and put our, get there for a while, and then we'll go around the world. And thanks all of you for taking the questions, and hope to see you at the Electric Aggregation next week at the Unity Center, same time, 6:30, and three weeks... And three weeks from now, I'll be right back here for the city school board. Thanks, everybody, for coming.